Good evening, everyone. I'm going to reconvene our supervisor meeting for today, and we didn't have a closed meeting, so shall we go straight into public hearing?
Yes, absolutely. Ms. Summers is here just to give an introduction to special exception 230101, Glen Farm LLC.
Glen Farm LLC has requested a special exception permit for a second dwelling on property located at 461 Quaintance Road in Woodville pursuant to 170-63A. The property is 577 acres and is zone conservation and agricultural. The proposed second dwelling is a pool house under construction. The initial plans for the pool house structure included four bedrooms and a bathroom. The applicant would now like to add a kitchen, and by adding a kitchen, it would take it out of accessory use, making it another dwelling unit. It is proposed that the second dwelling be used solely for the temporary use of guests of the owners. B.com noted they have no objections. The health department commented that the pool house is now served by a separate septic system, recently approved for a four-bedroom dwelling at 600 gallons per day. The pool house structure shares a well with the original dwelling, and they have no other objections to their request. The planning commission held a public hearing on this application on February 15th, in which they recommended approval with no conditions by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I will open the public hearing. For anyone here wishing to speak with regards to this particular SE 23-01-01, please raise your hand, be recognized, and when you come up, give us your name and the district you live in.
The owner is welcome to speak as well.
Yes, sir.
I'm Bruce Wodenski. We live at 461 Quaintance in the Piedmont District. And as Ms. Summers said, you know, the plan is 100% just to be for our family. The original building was done almost 10 years ago, and it only has one bedroom, and that's the one my wife and I use, and so the four bedrooms are really for our three adult sons and hopefully future family to come and visit. The zoning changed during the whole process. It took a long time with COVID to get this started and get it to where it is today. And, you know, we've had the pleasure, Ms. Smith, Mr. Whitson, and Mr. Carney were able to come out and see it, and I think, you know, all we want to be is a good neighbor. We have Mr. Omira here at the planning commission, you know, on our behalf. You know, we want to be a good citizen in Rattanah County and be a good steward of the land, and so that's the sole plan. We don't intend to do anything other than what we've done for the last 12 years, which is just enjoy being residents here of Rattanah County. I don't know if there's any questions for me? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Anyone else wishing to speak? We don't have anyone on Zoom. Seeing no hands, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the board.
Well, this is one of those properties, I think it's in one magisterial district and another voting district, but as a representative to the planning commission that's here from the board supervisors, I would just say that when we reviewed this item on the planning commission level, we found that it checked all the boxes for accessory dwelling unit. It's very close to the house, it's a small amount of square footage, it's designed for use by family and friends, and there were no conditions recommended, which seemed appropriate because frankly, the private driveway was better than the road.
That's true.
So, you know, it seemed like it was a good fit, and we had no concerns at the planning commission level from the public, and we unanimously recommended it for approval. So I would move things along, make a motion that we approve the special exception.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second discussion?
Is the amount of acreage listed properly?
577 acres, I believe.
It's a little tight, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, as Mr. Wodenski said, I went out and looked at it. I mean, it's a gorgeous property, you're so fortunate, and we're fortunate to have folks like you who decide to move to Rattanah County and approach our county with such a caring attitude, and we recognize that sometimes these ordinances become onerous and perhaps seem even overbearing or ridiculous, but we so appreciate you being forthcoming and just going through the right steps for this permit. And to me, it's just a no-brainer with a capital N and a capital B, so thanks for hosting us.
I'm very sorry I missed it.
Sounds like a second.
It's great, great place.
We may need to check the groundhog. All right, if there's no other discussion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Bruce. You're done in time for the basketball game.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
Okay, next is public comment.
Sure, it's public hearing, but it's getting close.
Yeah.
If there's anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized, come up and give us your name and your district. Looking for hands. Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, do we have any other public hearings on the agenda tonight?
No, sir.
So this is it for public comment?
Yes, sir.
John Capielli, Hampton District. I'm here to listen to the rest of the discussion about taking away the authority from the BZA and placing it with the board of supervisors. It seems to be that, once again, the board of supervisors is looking to try to grab more control, as they're trying to do with the company that's revising the zoning. I'm not sure, but I'm trying to see some legal action coming in the future. Is the board of supervisors willing to get into another legal jam? I guess that's going to have to be up to them. The second thing I wanted to bring up is about the tax situation. I actually found myself agreeing with Paige Glenn, which means I got to go buy a lottery ticket. All of the back and forth discussions that are with what's going to be cut and what's going to be raised, they're not being done with public comment. Yes, there are budget meetings, yes, you're having work sessions, but nobody can say anything at that time. You can just sit there and boil. I'm sorry?
To clarify, if there's any tax increase proposed, there must be a public hearing prior adoption, and I just want to clarify.
Yes, no, 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 I agree with that. I'm saying during the work sessions, there's no public input until after it's already been decided.
That's not true. I believe every meeting we've had on the budget front has had on the agenda a public comment period.
As I said, I may be wrong.
Yeah, you are in this case.
But it appears to the rest of the public, public comment is not welcome to it, and it's kind of difficult for most people to get out at 2:00 in the afternoon to come to a session.
I'm your representative, you're welcome to call me anytime and give me your input.
You're one of the people that's giving the problem.
I'm sorry?
Here, supervisor Whitson.
That's why I'm unsure this was not correct. So, I'd also, in regards to public comment, is there a way, seeing as you are able to change the rules so quickly, is there a way to put public comment at the, near the end of the session rather than the beginning of session, so that people can actually comment on what went on during the session? Just a question for thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize.
Thank you. Anyone else put a comment?
Ron Mackel, Jackson District, and the chairman of the BZA. I wanted to make a few comments on your upcoming discussion on changing the ordinance as far as SUPs and the BZA. First, I wanted to just cover some comments that I've heard that you made to the MadRap paper as far as why this should take place, because I wonder, Mr. Carney said that recent actions by the BZA clearly shows certainly lack of understanding what the BZA member's role is and how their function should be performed, but there's no specifics in that comment, in that what, where is the problem? Let's see, he also said it's concerning because the chair is acting like a legislator, and that's not the role of a BZA member or any body appointed by a judge. There again, are there any, is there any examples? It's, I don't know what I've done that was legislative, and I would really like to know, and if you're going to make a comment, please, you know, be specific as far as what the accusation is. Ms. Smith, in regards to the, well, actually, Ms. Donahue also made comments as far as increasing the numbers, and that that might not be a good idea. I think that would be a good idea. I think more voices is going to, you know, it's going to have more input for the board, which is going to make the job easier. And the thing that, in these comments I'm seeing is that particularly where we don't function as we're supposed to. What is functioning as we're supposed to? I see that sort of as a rubber stamp, in that, you know, you get the information, you know, from the planning commission or whatever, and they recommend approval, so you recommend approval, and it goes on, or vice versa. And when I applied for the position, that was not my understanding of the board. The BZA is an independent board required by the state to look at applications, appeals, variances, whatever, with an independent perspective. We don't have to look at it and go, how is this going to affect me when I'm up for reelection? Because we're not elected, we're appointed, so we don't have to, we don't have that consideration. And I think it makes our decisions much more viable, because we look at, we don't look at the people, we look at what's on the paper and what's being asked for, and make our decision. And so in your wanting to take away this special use permits, it's, basically what you're doing is you're depriving the citizens of the county an independent viewpoint on their application. And you've even, Ms. Smith said that, you know, that you want, you would like to have some input to the judges to control who is appointed to the board. That's not what the board's about. The board is supposed to be independent, you're not, it's not part of the county mechanism, it's required by the state. And to make that request, and Ms. Smith has also made the comment when she made her last planning commission appointment, was that the person you were appointing is your voice on the planning commission. The planning commission shouldn't be that way. It should be independent bodies that look at it, so you've got a lot of different people looking at it from different viewpoints, and then, you know, a decision is made based on those, all the viewpoints, but the viewpoints can't be your viewpoints, they have to be the viewpoints of the people that are on the boards. So, in making your determination tonight, which I'm sure, because we know what that's going to be, I would also like to recus that you provide a list to the public of exactly what are the problems that have brought you to this point, because right now, I have no idea, so I don't think anybody else does either. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none and none online, I will close the public comment portion of the evening. Brings us to new business.
Mr. Mackel was just referring to this matter, and the board discussed at your recent special meeting, potentially modifying the zoning ordinance to reassign special use permit uses such that they would become special exception uses. Prepared a draft ordinance that would do that, reviewed it with the county attorney, have provided it here with this document for public and board review, and also provided a public hearing notice that you could use. As you're aware, Code of Virginia 1521427 requires you to do that, and actually 2204 in this case, and it'll be with the planning commission. And the public hearing notice suggests that you would hold a joint public hearing with the planning commission at your May 1 meeting, and that's permitted by the code, and that would be the quickest way to effect this change, if that's what you want to do. Happy to answer questions about the ordinance.
For the purpose of advancing discussion, I would go ahead and make a motion that we advertise to, or we vote, that we move to advertise a joint public hearing of this matter at May meeting of the board supervisors evening session.
One second.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Curry, I did talk with one constituent who's an attorney, and that person just raised a question, and I'm sure you and Mr. Goff have thought about it, to the extent that the notion of special use permits is referenced in various parts of our zoning ordinance, and I assume it's only in our zoning ordinance, and to the extent that BZA as a body is referenced throughout our zoning ordinance, I just want to make sure that your proposed changes to the zoning ordinance are comprehensive and not leaving any loopholes if we were to go down this path.
It is referenced in the taxation section with respect to land use. We think that that can be touched at a later time, and quite frankly, it only references special use permit and not both that and special exception, which the commission revenue applies it as both, in that if you receive one, it doesn't automatically eliminate land use for the whole parcel.
Could we perhaps make a statement in the definition section where we actually state that conditional use, that the zoning ordinance views special exception and special use as conditional use permits, and they are one in the same?
I think, in the long run, I think we will want to modify the language further, and as presented, it was the kind of the simplest way to do that, and you can imagine there's a continuum of how you would separate uses in the use table from permitted by right, those that are permitted by special use permit, and those that are permitted by special exception, and you could have any range of application of that. So you might have 99% special use permit and 1% special exception, 50/50, or it might be 100% special exception, and that's all we're doing here. And this board could come back and apply, change one or more of them to special use permit next month if you wanted to. There were several other areas in the zoning ordinance that we did have to touch, because the special requirements for particular uses overtly reference that special permit or special use permit, and those were changed or recommended to be changed to special exception.
Good.
I just want to check that my motion covered that it be a joint public hearing.
That's what I heard.
Okay, great.
Yeah, but to reiterate, if we had something in definitions that specifically stated that special use and special exception were viewed the same under Virginia law, they are.
Well, it does say that, actually, right now, it points out that the Virginia law doesn't really consider different uses, and they're the same thing from the state code, but for our local ordinance, they are considered different. And I'd be leery to change that in our ordinance, because that could have strings that start to pull throughout, as opposed to simply reassigning those uses that are special use permit to special exception, until we dig in and the work that the Berkeley group can start with that. If the boards have a mind to completely take that out and make only one public hearing type use, conditional use, then do it then, when you can really dig into the whole thing. Of course, the BZA will remain in place, they statutorily must handle appeals and variances, and they will continue to do that.
And isn't it true that, at least in the Commonwealth, that there are very few counties that the BZA goes beyond?
There's a mixture, and different counties have different rationale. I think the last time we looked at this, majority of counties do not separate them. Code of Virginia allows the separation.
It was about one-third, I think, last time we looked at it.
And sometimes there's different rationale on how to do that, and I know where the county I came from, it was more of the objective items, for example, home occupation that had visitation. If you had that and you met these like 10 criteria, it was an S, it went to the BZA, which there was special exception, and it just, you know, how you call them, different things. It was more objective, but every county does it a little bit different. And some throw in an extra category, conditional use permit on top of those two, as a totally separate thing, but they're all leveraged by the same state code.
And just to be clear, I'd like to say that, for the record, that for, since before I was on the board, I philosophically think that all legislative function in this county should be tied to an elected official, so that if folks do not like what's happening, there is recourse so they can put other people in office. And the majority of these permits that are going through the BZA are for tourist zones, which turns ag land into a commercialized sort of use. I think by doing this, we can bring that back over here and legislate that use as we legislate all the other things that we do. I wanted to say that in light of the recent stuff that's been going on with the BZA. This, my view is not because of something that the BZA has done. I have believed that the board of supervisors should be doing this since before I was on the board, and so I just wanted to make that clear, it's something I've always thought should be tied to an elected official.
And Mr. Carney, I'll add, I appreciated when you explained that construct to me, because I've now been on, this is my fourth year on the board of supervisors, and I have always thought it somewhat arbitrary that we had this bifurcated process where land use decisions, in certain cases, not always clear to me why land use permit applications fall into a special exception and in other cases, a special use. And I asked, shortly after I was elected, I asked Mr. Curry to explain that to me, and, you know, it was a decent explanation, and special exceptions are, have perhaps broader reaching land use implications countywide, whereas use is use under a special use permit. But I've always, regardless of how the system is bifurcated, I've never, it never, despite my best efforts, never made clear sense to me. And then when you framed it for me, in the way you just described, that is, these are legislative functions ultimately, other than variances and appeals, which must remain with the BZA as a quasi judicial body, it makes, that, the way you had explained it to me made all the sense in the world. So I do appreciate you framing it that way, it was very helpful in my, in reaching my own understanding and decision to do this. And I will add that there's been a lot of talk about this, this appeal, recent appeal for this business in Sperryville, but as Mr. Carney articulated very well, that business is really incidental to the concerns that have come out of that decision, and it's really, it's really that decision that raised again the question of how best to handle special use permits, since they are land use by definition. So, anyway, I just, I wanted to say thank you for framing it the way you did.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Board of Zoning Appeals, number of members?
Ms. Smith noted previous meeting that the Code of Virginia does allow either five or seven members on the Board of Zoning Appeals, we have five. That enabling language is carried through in our local ordinance in Section 17140, which states that we have five. And so that section would have to change, however, I did start to look, and there are other sections that we need to change too, because for appeals and variances, a majority of the body needs to vote in the affirmative, which for a group of five is three. And so ordinance does speak to three in some places, and really need to come through very carefully to, if you were to change it to seven, then we'd have to change those threes to fours, and if board wants to move that way, I'll dig through the ordinance in detail and hunk that down. But you can certainly do it, it's leveraged by the Code of Virginia.
I mean, I think it's a good idea. After we finished our closed meeting the other week, I went home and I thought, well, I really better look in the Code of Virginia and see what the actual constructs of the BZA are, and what language guides how they function, and that's when I learned that we could either enlarge it to seven or point three alternates per the Code of Virginia, and I think that's an excellent idea. I don't know how my fellow board members feel, but I think that the current BZA could really use a steadying force, and additional appointees may afford us that chance.
Well, and to Mr. Mackel's point, I think that, I think more folks on there couldn't hurt at all, I don't see a downside.
They're certain, they're current.
More training.
I'm sorry.
$35 a meeting is going to cost you some money.
Well, I think if we.
Apprecially fewer meetings if you approve the ordinance change.
Well, that's correct, and I think there's also room in the legal, there's a legal line, we could probably mine for a little money if we needed to, but I don't really think it'll come to that, I think it'll even out.
I remember in early 2020, thank you for the initiative in reviewing the applicable code section. In early 2020, I know there was discussion about expanding the number of seats on the planning commission, and I took the position that, at least with seven members in the case of the planning commission, that it seemed about right, and beyond that, it would get unwieldy, and here, I feel like with the likely significantly reduced responsibilities of the BZA, and the fact that we may become more involved in appointments to the BZA, I just see increase in the number of board members as, I don't see it as improving efficiency, really, and perhaps it could have the, an adverse effect in making the BZA's operations more unwieldy. That's just my view. I'm not in, I'm not in favor of expanding the number of seats, but I could be alone in that regard, and that's okay.
Since Mr. Capielli admitted that he found himself agreeing with somebody in the public that he hasn't always agreed with recently, I find myself agreeing with him tonight. It's always been my position, because it's the Code of Virginia's position that the BZA should be separate and independent of this body, just like the court's supposed to be separated and independent of the legislative branch. And since they are a quasi judicial body appointed by the circuit court, it makes perfect sense. But no longer do we enjoy the luxury of having any of the judges have any idea what's going on up here. We had, for years, we had local gentleman, a very highly respected individual.
Somewhere.
But Sneeve, very highly regarded, and he knew this county, he grew up here, he walked to school here. And then we had, whether you agree with him or not, we had the luxury of having, you know, Judge Parker, Jeffrey Parker, who lived, except I guess when he went away to school, nearly his entire life in Falkir. And now we have judges from Loudoun County that don't have a clue what's going on up here. They don't know the people, they don't know anything about us. And then, so keep that in the back of your mind, at the same time, we have people actively campaigning locally for positions on the BZA and planning commission, even sending emails and letters out saying, I'm running for this position. They have been the ones that politicize it, not this body. So I think by, number one, by us maybe making a suggestion to the court about future appointees, and perhaps. by us maybe making a suggestion to the court about future appointees, and perhaps enlarging the body, we can perhaps bring some sensibility back to a body that doesn't seem to have it right now. I mean, we, we've seen their emails. We've seen the comments in the newspaper. A majority of that current body, admittedly, in public, they state that they don't know what the problem is. So it's up to this body. It's incumbent upon this body as representatives of the people to try and have some influence over that and bring some, some sort of sanity back to the process.
Mr. Frazier, I have to say, I really take great comfort that all five of us agree on something.
So with that, I, I favor, at this point in time, enlarging the body.
So we had a motion?
No.
Oh, we don't have a motion?
Ms. Smith told us about her idea.
I mean, I'll make the, I think, I think we've, I think we've got the, all the language here. I'll, I'll make the motion that we do it. And if you need any specifics, just let me know.
I can make a second.
So that's to direct staff to analyze county code and determine sections that must be amended to change the BZA membership from five members to seven members?
That's correct.
Now, this may, may not have to track as fast as the permit change, but maybe we want to make sure that we do this right. I don't want to put a lot of stuff on your plate if you don't think you can have it ready.
The other thing I just want to say, but now that we've got a motion and a second, is I, I'm really concerned with some of the things that I am seeing, that there's a FOIA officer with no FOIA training. And I watched the last meeting, and there seems to be a note taker secretary that's unclear of their duties, but wants to be paid more money. I really hope that with this, if we do expand to seven, that one of the reasons I would like to make suggestions as to who the appointees might be to a judge, is because there's things to do, and that's only five people. So if you get a chair, a vice chair, a FOIA officer, a secretary, and an appointee to the Planning Commission, then you have five members and five people that are responsible for those tasks. And so if you enlarge it to seven, then you have more people available to fill those roles, and possibly people that have experience doing that previously, which would be very valuable.
That's my only hangup, is be careful what you wish for, or you might get it. Because we don't know that we have any say whatsoever in who the additional two would be. It doesn't necessarily solve the problem, and I don't know if there's a way to do, to find out if we can have say before we vote to do this.
Legally, you, you don't. You can make suggestions, recommendations. Many localities do that. Ultimately, a judge will make the appointment.
I do believe, and I hope sincerely, that if we send a letter to the judge with our recommendations, and we point him to the videos of those recent meetings, that he will see the wisdom in making appointees that have experience doing those things, and provide both this board and the BZA, the help, and the people of Rappahannock County, the help that is so sorely needed. And that's, I think this has been perceived as a punitive measure, but I actually think that there's a deeper problem that needs to be solved.
I do believe there needs to be some assistance, because I think there's, you know, everybody's trying their best, but aren't necessarily, the, the group seems a little bit under experienced in my mind, in my opinion. And so if we can do something that would allow us to, to give them experience and some other trained individuals, I just don't know that we have any way to guarantee that.
And I, I do agree. I think the lack of minutes, the lack of basic understanding in FOIA and getting it done is very concerning to me.
Yes.
We, we as a county have been there before in the past. But I'm hopeful that with training, and with an open mind, and just sort of an open dialogue, that we can get there. And I agree that, with you, Ms. Smith, that there, there is a lot to do with, you know, minute taking, FOIA, all that kind of stuff. And it does divvy up the division of labor a little bit more if you add two more people. And these are judicial decisions. They're not legislative. They're judicial decisions. And judicial decisions made by laypeople, where you're reading ordinance and statute and this kind of stuff, and then making a decision, is not the easiest thing and not something that most people do in their everyday life.
Correct.
So I just want to set them up for success, so that I, I have faith that we can do this as a county, no doubt. And Mr. Michael said that he would, you know, be thrilled, or happy, or okay with more people joining that board. And I think that that is reason enough in my mind to, to, to at least go for it and try it.
And I did just want to mention to the board, so that you all know, I know there's been some questions about training, in-person training. And I believe Ms. Pierce is working with staff. And I had reached out to Gary also, that of course, any training opportunities that pop up, especially if it's in-person training, to please let the Planning Commission members know. And, you know, as some of us may be interested, maybe there's some cost sharing opportunities there in terms of education, too.
I know Ms. Pierce has contacted two attorneys, the one they typically work with, and the Mr. Krim, who says he's just recently done BZI training for another group. So I don't know if they're going to move forward with either of those. Depending on the action at the public hearing next month, I would, if, if the ordinance has changed relative to special exceptions, special use permits, then their training will likely focus on appeals and variances, which the Planning Commission would have an interest in. The board might have a tangential interest, just to understand the process, but you would never handle those. So certainly if that information is made available, we'll spread it widely.
Sounds good.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm definitely alone now.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. We'll say all five of us agreed, to the 95th percent point.
Break out the student.
It was good enough for me. Yeah, I just think bigger bodies is not.
Berkeley Group zoning ordinance.
I want to make sure the board was up to date on this, and trying to get ahead of schedule if possible, if it's comfortable for the board. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposed scope work by the Berkeley Group for Phase One. That Phase One was scaled back from their original concept and their work plan memo that they prepared, so that it was really focused on the objective portions of zoning ordinance rewrite, which is the procedural and order of operation sort of thing.
Yeah.
They, and I'll put words in the planning commissioner's mouth here a little bit. I think generally, the proposal met what they were, the planning commissioners were trying to, or requested Berkeley Group to do. And they deferred to action until their next meeting. So we can hit the ground running in May, which Berkeley Group said they have time to do and schedule. This board could authorize the award of this work contingent on the Planning Commission approving that scope at their next meeting. Otherwise, you just have to wait till May 1.
And this is from the money that was set aside previously?
Yeah, you already have this budgeted. There's general fund balance money.
I have had a real big problem with this Task Three, the ordinance organization formatting, ever since it was first mentioned. And it's kind of like, you know, once I get used to where things are in a grocery store, or the Home Depot, or whatever store you want to go in, then they deliberately change it so that I spend more time in there. And I, I really would hate to see us do that with the zoning ordinance. It should be, it should be changed only where needed.
There, I understand that. And in talking over this with the Berkeley Group, some of the most important things that people need to understand, like how to apply for something, are just completely buried.
Yeah, that's true.
As opposed to being pulled up front. And also, the special requirements that we talked about earlier with the special exceptions and special use permits, they're set aside in its own article and don't apply at all to permitted uses. So, for example, you talked about tourist homes earlier, certain districts, they're allowed by right. But none of those special requirements apply. But they probably should. And so the idea with this reorganization would be to pull those special requirements out and have them apply to everything as opposed to just special exceptions. It's a process. The Planning Commission will be working on the process. Certainly, you don't have to do that, but I think it would make the whole thing a lot easier. In the long run, it'll be confusion for us in the transition, now that we're comfortable with what's there from Fairfax from whatever 1970 that we stole.
It was, it was the Falkir, but Falkir said they got it from Fairfax. So when they brought it here in 83, it was the Falkir. They just ripped out about one-third of the pages.
So maybe we can minimize the new tricks, no offense, for the old dog.
I'm afraid we're going to wind up with a bunch of people from possibly the zoning administrator on down, this body.
Yeah.
Everybody's going to be saying, where is this?
There's absolutely going to be some learning curve involved. And the goal is to, you know, readability and understandably understand whatever that word is, make it easier, right? But there's going to be a process.
I, I do think there is that concern, and I, I think the planning commissioners feel it acutely, that in translating something from the current format to a new format, you worry that things will get lost in the shuffle. I have to say that. That's my concern. And I, I do think all of the members of the Planning Commission feel that acutely, and only look at this as an opportunity to clarify and, and possibly improve some of the areas that we've been caught up in over the years.
I mean, it does need some work, because back about, this is prior to 2007, there were two individuals that owned parcels of land that had not been subdivided prior to the 1950s. They both had children. One was in my district, Jackson District. One was over in Stonewall Hawthorne District. And I happen to know both families very well. And we've got this restriction, because years ago, before I was on the board, but under this zoning ordinance, there was a problem where they were handing out family divisions. They handed all of them out to this one individual property owner. And somebody that owned 25 acres from the original tract wanted to give their child a, a building lot, and they couldn't.
Yeah.
Because they'd all been taken by somebody else. So then they made it one per year, per family member. And then, so then, then we had this situation where these two different families wanted to do some family planning, and they couldn't do all the lots at one time for their children, because it was a one per year. And I talked to John McCarthy, and I said, this doesn't make any sense, because this doesn't affect any adjoining properties. So you're going to make them wait, make them live long enough to, to make these changes. The one had five children. You're going to make that person live that long to do that. And that was, that was wrong. So we amended the zoning ordinance, or actually the subdivision ordinance, to say that, but it was in both. And it only got changed in the zoning ordinance, but not in the subdivision ordinance. I believe it's still like that. And I brought that up two or three different times over the years. It still doesn't seem to get changed. It didn't get changed in both. It got changed in the one. It got changed in the zoning ordinance instead of the subdivision ordinance. So I didn't know it was like that until seven or eight years after the fact. Everybody's dead now that was part of that process. And I, you know, and I said to, I forget who exactly it was, but it was, Ms. Kaiser was saying, well, they've got a, you know, one per year. And I said, no, 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 we changed that. And she showed me in the subdivision ordinance where it was still there. But if you flip over to the zoning ordinance, that same reference had been changed. Somehow it didn't make it to the printers.
Which ultimately has no business in the, in the zoning ordinance. So it's a subdivision matter.
But it never got changed into subdivision ordinance where it should have been.
Shouldn't even be in the zoning ordinance, in my opinion.
So those types of things definitely need to be changed, and we need to actually change them this time.
Yeah.
Because, you know, that's, if it doesn't affect any adjoining property owners, it has, it's just punitive. For what reason, I wouldn't know.
All right. Do we have a motion by any chance, or further discussion?
So as I noted before, this motion would be to award the work order number five to Berkeley Group for Phase One of the zoning ordinance rewrite contingent on the scope being accepted by the Planning Commission. And I would assume you would give some deference to the Planning Commission to tweak the scope here and there if they thought it was necessary.
Idea of how much this is?
Yep.
Thirty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
I'd hate to see you spend thirty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and not be able to find a bread.
Now, I, I was thinking of this earlier. Mr. Carney noted during your discussions on the sign ordinance, that parallel guidance documents can be prepared as well. And so while the zoning ordinance necessarily has to be written in a certain legal way, we can develop some easier to read guidance documents to go along for the common process.
Sure could.
Well, just a, a language translation.
Yeah, I, I hear from so many constituents that they just don't, they're trying to do a business, they're trying to do something, and they cannot figure it out.
Practical.
You could always just do it, then ask for permission later. I mean.
That happens a lot.
They've still got that going on.
Well, we do have rule-bound constituents who don't want to get in trouble. And I think that people that have, are able to do businesses by right in this county should be able to do it, and I want to help them to do it.
Good point.
Which would, you know, and this would speak to that. I mean, it, yeah, I mean, I, I just, I don't want to, I do not want to dissuade anybody in this county that's trying to start a business from doing it, especially if they're allowed to do it.
Yeah.
I just had, I, I had a small business owner this morning. One of my constituents called me, and he was just a smart guy, and he was just like trying to navigate it. And he's got his business going, and he just doesn't know what he's allowed to, to do and to not do. And he's up to here. And he's multi-generational, Rappahannock, just trying to make it work. And so I really believe that we need to make it easier for people to do the things they're allowed to do without fear.
Yep.
We used to think like that.
I, I would just say, whenever I have someone reach out like that, a lot of times I, I do take a sit down with Michelle, or Michelle and Gary, to work through their questions, because ultimately, it's a zoning administrator determination, not my opinion, that will shape the outcome. And so I really do appreciate how willing staff is to discuss that with people, because the zoning ordinance can be convoluted, and they want to make sure they're not wasting their time and money by pursuing something that they don't have any chance of getting. So I just wanted to put that out there. I, I do think our staff does a really good job of trying to help people figure it out. Ultimately, a lot of it, too, is, is giving them a better product to help them do their jobs.
Yeah, I totally agree. And he will be reaching out to Michelle.
Good.
It's a balance. It's a balance on our part. Sometimes people want us to do all of their legwork.
That's correct. It's not fair.
To, you know, well, what kind of business can I do here? That's really not our job.
The application is always owned by the applicant, but.
But helping them manage the process is important. If we can make that cleaner, smoother, easier, and then on the process side, more defensible, right? So if you're going to end up before a judge, you want to make sure that you've included a, a clean, clear process, and one that leverages the state code to the greatest extent possible.
Totally. I had a, I had an individual contact me recently, who wants to buy property somewhere between the town of Washington, Sperryville, open a farm brewery. And, I mean, I hit all the highlights. Sufficient land buffer, don't upset your neighbors. Hire a land use attorney. Just so that, I mean, I think if you're going to make an investment in a property that's subject to our zoning ordinance, depending on your intended end use of that property, you just don't jump into it blindly. I mean, it's, if you're willing to make the investment in the property, you can invest in good legal counsel, too, and then contact the ABC agent.
Which is the get out of jail free card.
And he was grateful, and he said that, that advice was far better than anything, he was trying to initially work in Warren County, and it was just a morass. So on the flip side, we're small and nimble, and we can help people. But I agree with Mr. Carney that if someone, if someone wants to start a business, or adds onto their house, or wants to build an accessory dwelling, or whatever it is, you go into a zoning ordinance, like what the.
Or sometimes people just read it and say later that they didn't think that applied to them.
Right.
Which is, which is the great part of having a discussion up front.
Yeah. Someone make a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll move to, to award work order number five to Berkeley Group for Phase One of the zoning ordinance rewrite contingent on scope approval by the Planning Commission.
I will second that motion.
And I, I would just ask that you allow the planning. And I, I would just ask that you allow the Planning Commission some deference in that proposal, because I think we got it either the day of or the day before our last meeting, and there may be some additional feedback on that. But I know we, we do want to move forward with that, I think.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Agreed, second.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.